Everyone good? All right.
Can we adjust the screen back down so that we can see people again?
We sure can.
That'll be good. Sorry.
The side screen, thank you. It is 7:04 and I call to order on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. Attending this evening's meeting live and in the boardroom are board members Christine Malick, Allegra Smieszek, Peter Tensing. I am Board Chair Tim Paulus. Board members joining us remotely are Crystal Braaki and Paula Cole. We are also happy to have, joining us at the table Superintendent Unowski and other members of the district's team who will be participating are joining us remotely at this time. The Richfield Public Schools' mission statement is that we strive to inspire and empower each individual to learn, grow, and excel, and we all strive to keep that focus at the center of our discussions this evening, especially as we transition back to holding live meetings from all virtual. We want to welcome those of you who are watching us live, although we fear that we may be compromised and our livestream may be on hold while it's being used by the boys' basketball team, which just based on viewership is probably the right call to let them run live and watch us on tape delay. So, thank you for your patience as we work through the technology. With that, our first item of business this evening is to approve the agenda before us. Approval of the agenda is a routine item, so if anyone has, I will open a free flow for free-for-all comments. Otherwise, we will seek our usual motion to approve or amend.
I do not believe we have a need for a closed session tonight.
Is Mr. Holgy available to inform us?
We do not need a closed session, correct?
He is on mute.
No need for a closed session tonight.
No need for a closed session, okay. So amend that the closed session would be removed.
So I will move approval of the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Ms. Malick. We have a motion from Ms. Malick and a second from Mr. Tensing. Any final discussion? I'll ask this, that as we have members participating remotely, I'll ask Ms. Malick, our clerk, to conduct all votes on a roll call basis if we could.
Sure. Okay. Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Smieszek?
Aye.
Ms. Braaki?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
The clerk votes aye and the chair.
And the chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. Thank you, Ms. Malick. I suppose I should have mentioned that beforehand before catching you off guard there. Thanks. We'll now move into Information and Proposals, Non-Auction Items section of the agenda. This evening, we have the opportunity for public comment. Sadly, no one has volunteered to give public comment, and so our next opportunity for public comment will be a month from now, the second meeting in February, which is February 16th.
16th.
16th, thank you. It's written down here somewhere. All right. With that, we'll move over to Superintendent Unowski for the superintendent update.
All right, so we have three items on the superintendent update today. We have an update on pandemic and learning model, just to review briefly where we are. We have a presentation sharing our strategic plan, and then also, as we have become accustomed, our year-to-date financial plan. So with no further ado, we will move ourselves to our pandemic and learning model update. And so as we have been doing at least once a month or once every six weeks, we have been talking about where we are in terms of the overall pandemic. One of the things I like to do at each of our meeting is review the current case rates and review the initial guidance. So, current Hennepin County case rates is 35.6 per 10,000, and current Richfield case rate is 52.8 per 10,000. Keeping in mind that announcements are typically made every Tuesday, but with the Martin Luther King holiday yesterday, they actually will be sharing new numbers tomorrow. We do believe they will move into the mid-40s with slightly ticking up, but as we continue to monitor case rates, they continue to remain in that 35 to 45 range, and so we'll just keep monitoring. The governor's initial guidance suggested that we could have in-person learning if they get lower than nine per 10,000. Then, 10 to 19 was in-person for elementary with hybrid for secondary. 20 to 29, hybrid learning for all students, which is something we're really watching, is that 30 barrier specific to secondary. The initial guidance also had hybrid learning for elementary and distance for secondary when it's above 30, and then when it was above 50, distance learning for all. Now, it's important to note that recently, the governor changed that guidance related to elementary schools and removed case rates in regard to that consideration. We did, as a district, note that once case rates were above 50, the amount of staff quarantines were at a level that it was hard for us to staff buildings, and we actually have noted that from districts around the metro. So, we are moving on Monday of next week to elementary hybrid, and we'll be talking about that as we continue forward with our slides. So, along with many other districts in the state, which many began this week with a phased rollout, bringing K-1 and 2 students back, we're actually bringing pre-K through 5 students back on Monday, January 25th, across our entire district into our four-day-per-week hybrid. Distance learning, of course, will remain this entire calendar year for all the families for whom that has been their choice. As we look specifically at elementary, we're going to continue monitoring case rates because even though the governor did not make that part of his guidance, we want to make sure that bringing our students back to the level that we are isn't increasing cases and quarantines within Richfield. So, we'll continue to monitor with a goal of hopefully providing five-day-a-week in-person at some point, should progress continue to be made in terms of case rates. And then, even though the governor removed some of that guidance, we are going to continue doing our best and striving to maintain that and maintain the oversight within our work. And so, some examples are, as we moved to removing the guidance around case rates, he also removed the requirement to reduce our class sizes, to have rooms at half-capacity, and then six-foot social distancing was moved to three feet when feasible. We're going to do our best to try to stay with those guidelines while we can, and certainly while we remain within a hybrid, again, to the best of our ability while accommodating our student needs. This week, then, as we move ourselves forward, obviously, we had no school yesterday. Today is regular distance learning for all students, as we did move to that distance learning back in November. Tomorrow, Wednesday, is our typical asynchronous learning day for all students, and then as one of the requirements from the state of Minnesota and the governor expects, we're giving our teachers two days to plan, prepare their rooms, and prepare their lessons to move from the distance learning to a hybrid and in-person model. And then also, because we are shifting students across classrooms and making some pretty significant transitions, because we have people who asked to move from distance to in-person and hybrid, we're also giving our distance team members Friday for planning and to make those adjustments within their classrooms. The state provided five days of preparation time as you transition to distance or from distance. So, as of now, our teachers who are teaching in hybrid, who moved to distance and are now moving back to hybrid at the end of this week will have used four of those five days. Our teachers in distance will have used three. And we're purposely doing that because we want to give a couple of days that distance teachers end up transitioning back into a classroom at some point during the course of the school year. Then, it's important to look at some of the additional programming and some of the additional components that we have. Special ed is also a unique case with students with special needs. Similar to our elementary, we are looking at implementing and are planning to implement a four-day-per-week hybrid with our elementary or with our K-12 secondary students, and how that is implemented is the IEP team meets with the family, has a conversation, and based on student needs, we're bringing students in for up to five days or four days per week. As you know, the State High School League and the Centers for Disease Control partnered to open athletics or recommend opening athletics and activities. We did that for practice on January 4th. Things have been going quite successfully thus far. We do have masking across all of our athletics and activities implemented, and actually, our YouTube channel is using that for the boys' basketball game tonight. And so, that is why we are watching this on tape, because we actually have games happening within our activities. As I said earlier, current case rates are 35.6 per 10,000 with an anticipated rate announcement in the low 40s. So, that means that from a secondary perspective, where the guidance remains, it has to be 30 or fewer to consider a move to hybrid or in-person later on. That means that we're going to need to continue remaining in distance, and we'll continue to monitor case rates in regard to our secondary, hopefully with an upcoming transition to hybrid if case rates continue to move lower. We will give another board update in one month from today or one month from this meeting at our February 16th meeting, which would be the next time we would significantly consider the possibility of a transition. The other thing to share that could also change some of this has to do with vaccines, because we were just given, as a district, part of a pilot across the state, which gave 11 vaccines to Richfield Public Schools. And while that number isn't necessarily large, we worked through with both our partners in Bloomington Public Health and then also one of our local infectious disease specialists, Dr. DeVries, along with Mr. Tensing, and had a conversation about how to prioritize vaccines. I'm proud and excited to share that we were able to offer to staff over the age of 65 working in Richfield Public Schools the ability to have a vaccine. And so, we strategically and systemically worked through our team, much like you've seen at a larger level, looking at age and vulnerability as the way to begin the initial prioritization. The other thing I would want to share is that even though the state has given us access to 11 vaccines, we get great service from our partners in Bloomington Public Health. And as local authorities have the ability to prioritize certain employees and certain partners, Bloomington Public Health has prioritized Richfield Public Schools and their school partners as higher priority. And so, they have also been partnering with us on vaccines to our staff members, many of whom are serving special education students or health services, the opportunity to get a vaccine. And so, while we have announced out 11 vaccines to our staff as given by the state, we are looking forward to appointments, which are being shared out, and vaccines, which are being shared with some of our special education staff members who provide health services in Richfield, and anticipate that going at a faster rate. It is important to note that those are those who are providing specific some form of health services. It is not regular classroom teachers yet. We have not gotten to the full list of what's called State Priority 1B. Some of our staff members by our partners in Bloomington Public Health were moved to the 1A3 or the final group of 1A in terms of the rollout. And so, as we continue to have vaccines, we may be able to offer more programming within Richfield as we also monitor case rates. With that, I will pause and turn it to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll ask the board, those who are here, to carry on in our usual free-for-all way, if you will, if you have comments or questions for the superintendent, before I go to those who are joining us remotely.
I would just like to appreciate the flexibility of our teachers in yet another shift in how we're delivering education. It's got to be a bit of a challenge. I'm glad we were able to work out a way to give them some time to adjust, so very much appreciation for that. I do have one question about athletics. So, what are the rules for attendance for games? Is it a limited number? Is it parents of the players?
At present, games are open in person to two family members per athlete or activity member. They have to be masked, they have to be socially distanced, but that is the cap. And then, I believe there is a room cap depending on the size of the space. It could be as low as 25 or 50, it could go as high as 150 if it was an extremely large space.
Thank you for that.
And I believe it's a sign-up, that there's a registration form for those, for family and others to claim those spots. At least, that's what I've seen.
Yes, to make sure that we don't go above the possible room capacity maximum with the social distancing. Thank you, Superintendent.
Mr. Tensing, Ms. Smieszek?
I don't have a whole lot, other than, you know, I think that it's just been, it's been good to, it's been good to see that the district has, you know, really done a good job, I think, of putting together transparent prioritization parameters for distribution of vaccine. You know, we've seen that that can occasionally go a little bit bumpy, and I think I'm really proud of how the district is putting this together in a way that's very transparent. And, you know, we'll keep our fingers crossed that supply is adequate to kind of certainly get all of our in-person staff vaccinated, hopefully six weeks or so, but that's not a given, not a given necessarily. I think the other piece is just being aware that, you know, the likelihood is that we're probably, you know, I guess that we wouldn't necessarily expect rates to go down very much at this point, and so, you know, expecting that probably COVID rates are going to be picking back up, if anything, but hopefully that'll be not a rapid rise like we saw prior to Thanksgiving. And then, we'll see how vaccine mitigates that, but there's some unknowns there. So, it's always been a moving target and continues to do that, so I appreciate the continued vigilance.
Thank you.
No questions, just grateful to everyone for their hard work.
Ms. Braaki, do you have any comments or questions?
I think a comment, which is just wanting to affirm and validate, I feel like, some of the frustration that I know secondary parents and students are feeling, which is the guidance was changed for elementary but has not been changed for secondary. You know, we have more detailed plans that we are able to share right now for elementary than we do for secondary, and I know that the team is working on plans for secondary, but, you know, kids coming back at the elementary level, I think, is something that everybody wants to celebrate, and it makes it hard for our secondary kids and their families to not wonder why it's not possible for them to, or to not want to know what's going to happen next. And so, I just want to acknowledge the understandable frustration and real desire for more information and just know that we hear that and want and know we need to be able to provide that even in this period of ambiguity that we're in.
Thank you, Crystal. Ms. Cole? Do you have questions or comments?
I do not have questions. I have a comment. I appreciate sharing the information in a very clear way for our thousands of viewers, but really about also what's been happening behind the scenes. I reached out to Steve yesterday and I said, well, we need to vaccinate the nurses, because, you know, when I was a teacher and the kids had a fever, the first thing that the teacher would do, send them to the nurse, and the nurse is the one who calls home if they have a, you know, and then Steve is like, yeah, they've already been vaccinated, which I didn't know, and I'm like, oh my God, yeah, they are licensed nurses. They are, you know, first, you know, whichever name they're calling that. So, I appreciate that, all of that information and the detail and the transparency as always. So, that's all I have for now. So, I pass the mic to Ms. Malick.
Just one clarification, yes, Bloomington Public Health, and we are very pleased with our partners. And one of the things we have to get very clear on with our language is, they have been offered vaccines. And similar to all of the people over 65, they have been offered vaccines. And so, as we continue our work forward, we are in a process where all of the people providing any form of health service and most special ed staff will be offered vaccines within the next week, week and a half. Again, through our great partnership with Bloomington Public Health, it is not a requirement for people to take vaccines, it is not a requirement for people to take a COVID test, but we are offering COVID tests every two weeks on-site, starting on Monday of the 25th, and we are offering vaccines, again, continuing as they roll out to each of our staff people.
Thanks, Steve. I just have a few comments, and they largely build on some that were already made. I want to echo Crystal's comment, you know, that the secondary parents have an understandable level of frustration, just like everyone else. The last 10 months have been very frustrating for the world, and secondary parents are not excluded. One of the challenges a parent expressed to me today was not knowing or understanding our plan, and I had to explain that the team is building plans constantly, and then the situation doesn't get to a point where we can implement them, and then it changes, and then you make a new one. And so, the, just because you come up with something doesn't mean it gets shared, but it certainly doesn't indicate that we haven't been preparing. And so, that's one of the challenges, is that there's been a lot of work that has been drawn up and thrown away in the last 10 months, and that is, that's just tough. It's, you know, and the only alternative to that is to explain all these plans, and then we have confusion, and then we have frustration when we don't implement them because case rates went badly or something like that. So, that's one comment that was shared with me. I also want to echo Christine's comment in appreciation for the staff and the families and their flexibility, and, you know, we're rolling back out, we might have to retract. You know, there are districts where K-5 is going full-on in-person without it being hybrid. Our hybrid is four days, it's pretty substantial, and so, I'm pleased that we're able to go K-5 or pre-K to 5 all at once right into our hybrid model. That is nice. I will ask, there were a couple of questions that came up in conversations with a community member. When vaccines are offered, and you had mentioned this, Steve, you'd said, you know, they're offered and tests are offered, but people don't have to take them. Do we have any, what is, do we have a stance or do we have any opportunity, whether it's staff or students, if a vaccine is declined or we don't have, you know, take-up of vaccines, if and when they are available broadly?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
What happens if we, through our partnership with Bloomington Public Health, we get all the vaccines for our staff and everyone happens to decline?
If we get, well, so I can talk about intentions. What I can say is, when we get to a situation where we feel we have the ability to have offered vaccines to all of our staff, if case rates allow us to open and the governor allows us to open, we would be working towards moving to an in-person model for all of our students, and we would be asking our staff to return. And so, while staff have the right to have a vaccine or not, as we continue forward with that as an opportunity, we would be looking to do the best possible transition back to in-person instruction.
Okay. And down the line, would that be the same for students, that they have the option to attend with having evidence of vaccination or not?
So, my understanding this year is that that is what it looks like. We don't know if the state will create rules around vaccine requirements for being in school. There are vaccine requirements, for the most part, in terms of measles and mumps and rubella and other areas. We don't know if the government will act on that as a requirement for the fall, but we'll monitor and watch.
Thank you. And one other comment that someone asked of me, and I didn't have a good sense of it, our student health center is still open, correct? The one attached, it's open, I believe, Wednesdays, according to the website. It's open Wednesday afternoons with appointments. Would that, is that on pace to be a facility that possibly offers vaccinations to the public?
You know, I'm going to have to, I'm looking at Dr. Clarkson at the moment, and I'm feeling like we had to close the Park Nicklet Health Center temporarily because they had to prioritize staff for COVID. Dr. Clarkson, am I correct? Yeah, please tag in on.
The Health Resource Center is not open for wellness screenings. They just haven't been, and that will not be a place where they will be offering vaccinations.
Okay. What we do anticipate is, we anticipate Bloomington Public Health partnering with us on a vaccine clinic in our district. It would likely start with staff, obviously, as it's been prioritized across the state, and that at some point, hopefully, that would be the same type of opportunity for our students.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Before we move on, any final comments or questions on the model update? All right, thank you, Superintendent. Next item.
All right. Next item is our strategic plan, and I am proud that we have come to this point in the process. And so, our strategic plan is that which guides us. I am excited to be a superintendent in my seventh year, to have worked with the community on a strategic plan in year one, gone through five years of a strategic plan, and are now launching out strategic plan number two. And our strategic plan is that process that helps us look at what are the top priorities of our community and our team, and how will we focus on moving forward with those in the coming years ahead. Just as a quick summary of the process we went through, we reviewed our previous plan and our measures on vision cards, spent several months gathering inputs, surveying stakeholders, and drafting our plan. Obviously, COVID arrived and things changed. We reviewed then in the fall and revised our draft, gathering additional feedback, shared things publicly at our last meeting, and we are presenting our final draft version to you today. And so, we also want to look at where do we go from today forward? And so, we are looking to launch and communicate the new strategic plan, which actually would begin in fall of our next school year. But that would require us, starting in February through the summer, to create vision cards and measured, measurements, to create that clear measurement and communication around how are we doing on our strategic plan, how are we succeeding or not, and what adjustments need to be made? And then also, as we work our way through the spring and into the beginning of summer, making sure we have our first-year priorities and plan for implementation as we kind of look across that timeline over the next five years. As you look at the strategic plan, which is on the slide after the questions or comments within our board packet, you will notice some new formatting, some attractive branding, "Richfield Realized: Plan 2021 through 2026." You'll notice that we put it into each strategy area, Academics, Activities, Climate and Culture, Business and Operations, and Communications and Marketing. Each of those areas has a vision statement, a statement of our beliefs and goals, and then, those goals lay out what are the main broad-based areas. As you scroll to the later component of our strategic plan, you'll see all of the input and all the additional comments and the things for us to consider as we work towards achieving each of those goals. So, as we work towards each of those actions and activities, looking at measurements, goals, and timelines are that next step of development in our strategic plan processes as we move ourselves forward. So, with that, and as I share this with you, I will pause again for questions and comments.
Thank you. Any of the board members in the boardroom tonight have questions or comments about the strategic plan that's presented here?
I'm very pleased with the plan and appreciate all of the work that's gone into it, in addition to not only all the community input, but, you know, our opportunities to kind of evaluate this as a board and get lined up, so just expressing the appreciation of that.
Ms. Malick, comments, questions?
I am just looking at the timeline, so, and I may remember it wrong from how things kind of rolled out when we did our strategic plan when you first arrived, but it seems like a really, I don't mean this negatively, it's just, it seems like a slow rollout. Like, year one for, I mean, I know we've been dealing with COVID, and, but we've taken pretty much this whole past year to make the plan.
Yep.
Right? So, and then, year one is going to be selecting activities to reach goals and implementation, create a calendar, and performance measures.
Yep. So, that is creating vision cards and that overall five-year calendar, in addition to picking things for that first year. And as you think about year one, I want you to think about that as today through the end of next year. And so, as you look back on the slides, we plan on creating the vision cards, which are draft measurements and communication, prior to the launch of school next year.
Okay.
And we're talking about year one being the 2021, 2022 school year. So, we plan on entering next year's school year with our performance measures, evaluation plan drafted and set and shared.
So technically, sorry, so technically, year two starts in the fall?
No, technically, year one starts in the fall, but many of the year one activities that I think you're pointing to are actually occurring as part of the, before the year one starts.
Okay.
So, if you look at year two, implement our key activities, evaluate our progress, provide training and reporting outcomes, those are the things that will happen throughout the course of the year. Everything else should happen before. And so, going back in my presentation slides, we will be creating the key activities for 21, 22, and coming to agreement on those this spring. We'll be creating vision cards and measures and evaluation methodology this spring, moving ourselves forward. And so, next year, we'll really also be about implementing those identified activities and measuring them and sharing them out. It does seem like, as I'm saying this, that we probably need to go and clarify some of that timeline, so it cleans that up, and so, we will look at doing a little bit of redrafting to that piece.
Maybe just, yeah, some added detail would be helpful.
All right, thank you.
I've just really appreciated being part of the process and seeing, you know, the community input, seeing this draft kind of continually revised based on that feedback and that input. And I think it's been fairly remarkable to keep this plan and that thread going from pre-COVID to our future and still responding to all the crisis that we have been responding to. So, I just want to commend the leadership of all of our leaders for keeping this work going while responding to crisis. going while responding to crisis in the moment.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And as a leader, I will acknowledge our hope was to have had this done in January and be launching right now, rather than launching six months from now. So yes, it has had an impact, but we appreciate it, and have, we thought as a team and as a community, it was important to continue moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Baraki, do you have any comments or questions?
Just a few. One, I just want to share how proud I am of this and appreciation for it, because I do think it reflects a bold and ambitious view of what's possible and what we should be working towards. And obviously, the challenge now comes in actualizing it, but I, like, that's what I want to do. It's the work that I want to be doing. And I, I mean, just to build off of what the superintendent just said, I think it was the right call to pause for six months and to actually incorporate our reality and what we have learned and what we know to be true about what's happening right now into this, instead of trying to create a strategic plan that, you know, would sort of be operating in an alternate universe that is not the one that we're currently in anymore. So I am excited about it. I'm proud of it. I think, you know, one of the most important things on my mind is what does it look like to bring this to life and to ensure that our staff feel deeply connected to this and deeply invested in this, because I think all of us know it's the day-to-day experiences that happen in classrooms and schools, on school buses, in our lunchrooms, that actually will determine whether this sinks or whether it flies. And so that's a big thing on my mind that I'll be interested to hear a lot more about as we get further in. And then the last thing, and this is a really small thing, but it was really meaningful to me that the photographs were all labeled with what they were from, and that you could see this actually is our community. These are our students, our families, our staff. And just having that little detail in every photograph, like, made it more real to me and made clear, these are not stock images. This is who we are. This is Richfield, in a way that I just really loved, so wanted to call that out.
Thank you. We'll share that with Communications Director Jennifer Valley, and we are very proud of the work the communications team and overseen by Mr. Holgy have done to put this together in an attractive fashion. That is also informative and effective.
All right. Ms. Cole, do you have questions or comments?
Just a comment. Echo a crystal, and everyone else has said, and show appreciation for how inclusive in collecting everyone's opinions the process was, how transparent. Appreciate how we brought in the community, and I believe their participation and their opinion, it feels live in that document, it feels very present. And I'm really excited to see what we go next with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. I would, you know, just really, like, I'm learning what Ms. Baraki had told me before, is that all the good comments get taken by the time it's your turn, when you serve as chair. But the delay was necessary, right? It was forced upon us if we wanted to do it right. We could have done it in expedient fashion, but we would have missed all that community input. I know, Ms. Malick, you've brought up before, you know, this is a five-year plan, and by the time we get ready, you know, we're a year and a half into it, but we're also building on top of a practice that we have one already, and the vision cards themselves, and how to build them, and how to use them, and how to feed them. I'd like to think we've learned from the last one as well, and that we can get to where this one hits the road, when it finally does go live in the fall, with more of a head start than we did on its predecessor. So I think that the delay has helped us, or we've used it well and didn't treat it as a checkbox exercise, but rather sought the community endpoint that would really inform us and really help drive a more meaningful document. That's all I have. Does anyone have any last comments before we move to the next item?
I would just add, you know, a lot of us attended some of those meetings last year when we were still meeting in person, and community was sharing, and I think noting what a huge turnout we had for that, and how diverse it was, and how much more it represented our actual district and the community of Richfield. I think that really says something to me about how we listened and responded with our first strategic plan, the fact that people were excited to come out and share and felt listened to the first time, and thought it was worth their time to come back and help us build the next plan. So I think I really appreciate that community involvement in it. I think it really shows that people felt listened to in the first round, so I think that's good.
Great. Anything else before we move on? All right then, moving on.
All right. Item number three, page 26 of our board packet. I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Holgy for our financial report. So Craig, show me the money.
Very good. Thank you. So as Steve mentioned earlier, this is a new monthly update that we have available for our budget review. We tend to start looking at this after the audit is completed. We are using a new tool this year that provides some more detailed analytics I'm going to share with you. There's one new column specifically to take a look at, but just as a reminder of kind of the, each one of the columns in this area, first of all, the first two columns are the end-of-year audited data for our revenues and expenditures for the previous two years. So the first is through June 30th, 2019, and the next one is through June 30th of 2020. And then we have our revised budget, which is actually our adopted budget. So this tool listed as revised budget, it's the actual adopted budget from June of 2020 for the 2020-2021 school year. The fourth column is a new column that is on this tool that allows us to take a look at our projected end-of-year. And what this does in this tool is it gives a three-year look back on how much revenue or how much expenditure was achieved at this point as of, in this report, through December 31, 2020, and projects the revenue and/or expenditures based on similar spending patterns or similar revenue patterns. Now, as a reminder, the timing of some of our revenues being booked is one of the things that we're trying to work to improve on over the last couple of years, but you'll see that there are still some variations in that. The other interesting thing is the additional revenues and expenditures associated with COVID for this year and for next year is going to start to throw things out of whack for a little bit, so we're going to be monitoring that a little bit more carefully. But we are, we have the opportunity to take a look at how those changes occur and what's the impact of that. The fourth column is the received year-to-date, as of December 31, 2020. The remaining budget is the next column, and then it looks at the percentages of budget received for the current year, and then how that relates to the percentages of budget actual for the next two years. Then it lists current year-to-date versus prior year-to-date, so what that variation is from the previous year to this year, and then the actual revenues or actual expenditures in those last two columns. But just kind of a highlight of the analytics that we're able to look at, what we are most concerned about as we're watching this is for variations in revenues or expenditures as it relates to the percentage from the previous two years to this year, and what are the reasons for that. And then also with this tool, obviously, being able to project end-of-year based on some historic trends, it gives us a little bit more snapshot of where we might end up. As we look at this under the revenues category on the first page, you'll notice state revenues are down as a percentage by about one and a half to 2%, which is showing a projected end-of-year of $44,965 versus $46,150. This is specifically due to some timing of some of our receivables for state aid, but not like we're, it's not that we are projecting that at the end of year, but we have not received as a percentage to date, and so it's making that projection in there. Federal, you'll see, is significantly up from our revised budget and significantly up from the previous two years. The district received $1.4 million in coronavirus response funds for us to use between July 1, 2020, and December 31, 2020. So there was a six-month period of time where we had to spend those funds that were made in the trust through the federal coronavirus response fund act. And you'll see, when we get down to expenditures, I'll point out where the bulk of those funds were, but they will be impacting some of our salaries and salaries. So you'll see that $1.4 million up there. Local sales is another one under the revenues, where we're seeing an increase from the revised budget as well, projected previously. We did have some property casualty liability insurance claims, specifically due to some flooding, and so that's why that revenue is received through some insurance fund in that fourth-line item. As we look at that, you'll see end-of-year revised budget is $67,844 for revenue. Right now, we're projecting $68,609,000. Some of that will change yet, but most of that variance will be connected in with those federal relief funds. When we move on to expenditures, you'll see that we have some salaries and wages that are lower. One of the things that we know is that our costs right now are lower because we are doing distance learning and have some other ways to be providing some of our instruction without requiring stuff to be coming into classrooms, so that's one of the areas where these salaries and wages are lower. Our purchase services is down. Most of this is a timing delay with some payments to 287 and some invoices we've been receiving, as well as our special education transportation. We're working with some contracts based on federal guidance or state guidance about continuation of services and support for our contracted services providers for our special education and our homeless housing mobile. So those are areas that we are anticipating some lower expenditures in. And then you'll notice that our supplies and equipment is up from, projected to be up from revised budget, and obviously up from year-to-date spend previously. Most of that is tied back with those CRF coronavirus response funds. So we have basically three different categories that we use our CRF on. One is for some additional services for staff that we have to hire, just for additional health services. We also used it for some additional cleaning equipment and supplies to help our things be more efficient. And we also purchased a number of, a large volume of school supplies. It helps for instructional supplies for our classrooms to help so when students are in class, they're not having to share the same tools and resources, and so it's helping with the sanitation, helping kind of prevent that spread through that tactical hand, as well as providing some tools for individuals to be bringing home and using for their instruction at home when needed. So those are kind of the highlights of those expenditures by object series. You'll see, right now, those expenditures are projected to be down from the revised budget, but we will continue to refine this as we are catching up on some of those expenditures through that, those COVID funds and things like that. As we move down in the expenditure program series, you'll see some relatively consistent as a percentages. The one thing, just to kind of note, the facilities you'll see is projected end-of-year higher than what is included. That has to do with some of those equipment purchases that we use for clean supplies and things like that for our response to coronavirus to make that more. Any? I'm going to highlight a couple of things on the second page, and then I'll respond to any questions the board may have. On the second page, kind of the one big thing to take a look at is service. We know that we are not as many as we have. Food service revenue is down from, is part of the budget, because we have not had as many students in class or in school every day, eating meals, even though we've been doing the meals and things like that, serving large volumes of, as well as we had a program that, for a couple of months, served health in the community, program as well. You will note, however, that some of the projected end-of-year expenses for our service program are all effectively lower, so those have offset because we've been trying to work to be efficient with that staffing, supply, equipment for food service, supporting meal service. With that, if there are any questions, I will respond. Otherwise, it's information to the board this evening. One of the things that we want is to make sure the board is aware of the funding and is looking at that over time, our use of resources.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holgy. For those who are in the room tonight, any questions for Mr. Holgy on the report?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Neither.
No questions, just thank you for all of the details and walking us through it.
All right. Ms. Baraki, any comments or questions?
Nothing for me. Thank you, Craig.
Ms. Cole, comments or questions for Mr. Holgy?
I do not. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Holgy, thank you.
I also have no comments or questions, and so with that, well, that concludes the superintendent update. Thank you. We now move on to the next item on the agenda, the consent agenda, which contains routine business items, and because it's a routine business item, we won't really pause for questions, but the consent part of the name is that we consent to pass this in bulk without a lot of conversation. So are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like to remove for additional Failing that, we will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. This is Crystal.
Crystal jumped in very quickly. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Ms. Baraki.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Mieschek. Any further discussion? Ms. Malick, could I ask you to poll the board, please?
Yes, of course. Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Mieschek?
Aye.
Ms. Baraki?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
The clerk votes aye, and Chair follows.
Aye. All right. The consent agenda is passed. Thank you. We move on to old business, and there are some policies here that we have seen before. In fact, the first one, old business, policy 113, bullying prohibition. This is a third read and request for approval if we deem it ready. Is that correct?
That is correct, and we were close to requesting passage at our last meeting. There was some clarification asked to be added in regard to the definition of immediately. If you look at the language that was suggested, a person may report conduct they believe to be bullying, even if more than 24 hours have passed. And so we leave immediately in there as something to understand, but that language has been added to make sure that we have that. And so with those changes and the continued updates to clarify, we have this before you to see if we are ready to pass.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to jump to those visiting us on the screen and ask, Ms. Baraki had mentioned the immediately concern last time. I want to give her the opportunity to go first, if she has questions or comments, or to confirm that the updated language meets her expectations.
Thank you. Yes, I am, I'm pleased with the updates that have been made and look forward to this going into effect.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Cole, do you have questions or comments on the policy in front of us?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
All right. For the board members in the boardroom, any questions or comments on policy 113, bullying prohibition, the update before us?
The other thing we talked about was referral to services for the victim of the bullying. And I don't, I mean, if this covers it, that's fine. I don't really see that it changed.
Within the policy itself, and similar, we looked at similar comments in regard to the harassment policy. So we do training. We do sexual harassment and harassment and bullying reduction training, teaching in curriculum. We provide additional counselor and social work support within each of our schools. We provide additional training in regard to possible bullying and how to handle that within our schools, but those aren't contained specifically in the policy. And one of the awkward components, and I will be introducing some of this stuff with relation to the harassment policy, is this is, practices are there proactively, but they don't end up specific in the policy. Sadly, some of our policies are about how do you deal with it when this happens in that regard.
Any other questions or comments? Because this is a third read, and I think we've, we may be ready, we could entertain a motion. Policy 113, third read.
I'll move to approve policy 113.
Thank you, Ms. Mieschek.
And I will second.
We have a motion for Ms. Mieschek and a second by Ms. We have a motion for Ms. Mechech and a second by Mr. Tensing. Any last chance for discussion or comments before we move forward with a vote?
I will poll the board. Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Mechech?
Aye.
Ms. Baraki?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
The clerk votes aye and Chair Paulus.
Aye. And policy 113, bullying prevention prohibition is approved. Okay. The next item is policy 103, racial, religious and sexual harassment and violence in the administrative guidelines 103.1. This is also offered as a final read for possible approval.
Correct. And so our harassment prohibition formerly titled and will be titled unless there is a passage should be changed to harassment prohibition. And those have been updated along with the guidelines. Similarly, we wanted to outline in the header some of the proactive steps, including sexual harassment reduction training and curriculum integrated into health curriculum, gender inclusion training, sex trafficking prevention training, and also RPS partnering with the city and county to train and educate our students and staff in regard to harassment, how to prevent it, what it looks like and how to report. And so you will see the updated harassment prohibition policy, administrative guidelines and reporting methods. And with both this and the bullying policy, we are working on one of the other components that the board talked about, which is an online reporting mechanism which can go live once these policies are passed.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone present in the boardroom have questions or comments on policy 103?
No questions.
And to my right, no questions, no comments. Ms. Baraki, do you have questions or comments on policy 103?
No questions. Again, excited to have this be implemented and really looking forward to some of that online access that the superintendent just referenced.
Ms. Cole, questions or comments?
I do not have any. Thank you.
I also have no questions or comments. And with that, as this is the third read and it is eligible for passage.
I will move the policy as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Baraki. A second by Ms. Cole. Last chance for discussion or comments before we move to a vote?
I will poll the board. Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Mechech?
Aye.
Ms. Baraki?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
The clerk votes aye and Chair Paulus.
Aye. And policy 103 is approved. All right. The last item of old business in front of us is the second read of policy 115, our new Title IX policy.
Correct. And as we are aware, the complexity is, is that this policy looks very similar in many ways to harassment policy, but it is recommended we have a separate Title IX policy. Reporting methods will look also similar to bullying and harassment. And what we'll be doing in regard to reporting and online reporting is making sure that it is not important to the reporter that they know the difference between a Title IX report and a harassment report. That is the responsibility of our legal support or our officer who oversees this, Mr. Holgy. And so you'll see a lot of the same language and just that nuances of us needing both of those policies. So this is read two and being presented to you tonight.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone present in the boardroom have questions or comments on the second read of policy 115, the Title IX policy?
I would just say I appreciate the streamlining of the forms and just the simplifying and taking some of that onus of figuring out where the, where things fall in the category off of the person reporting and putting it where, with the professionals who understand the details of that. And also the adding these to an online reporting process is a good move. Thank you.
Mr. Tensing, Ms. Mechech, comments, questions?
None.
Good. All right. Ms. Baraki, do you have questions or comments on the Title IX policy as presented?
I do not. I'm all set.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Cole?
I don't have any questions or comments. Thank you.
I will just echo then what Ms. Malick had contributed, which is it is not the burden of the person reporting to know which of our esoteric policies they are reporting. They just knew that something untoward had occurred and they just want to report it to the person who can put it in the right category. And so the burden is on us to get it right. So as a second read, we will, I did not hear any substantive comments or edits. We will bring this back at the, hopefully in the near term for possible approval in February.
Yes, unless you would prefer to move it tonight, which of course we're always open to since it is in complete alignment with a couple of the other policies, which we have done in the past, but it doesn't necessarily need to happen.
Right. I understand. I would prefer to wait a third read as it is a new policy just to make sure that the board had ample time to soak it in. And perhaps the extra two weeks would give people, you know, more comfort or some area of alignment or misalignment that they discovered. So.
Perfect.
I'm just trying to stuff the old business. Feels familiar.
That's why we have practices built in place so that we continue them when it makes sense.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Okay. So with that, we will move into new business. And the first item of new business is policy 581, protection and privacy of people records and administrative guidelines.
Yes. And for those of you following along, we're on page 142 of the Board packet, which provides over 60 pages of reading. This is a policy for us to review. And what we are doing in our first read is just reviewing all of the ways that we protect the privacy of our students. What is public data? What is private data? And under what circumstances we share that data and what, under what circumstances we don't share that data? What data we do share, what data we don't share and with whom we do share and with whom we do not share. Also, how do we maintain or destroy records? How do we keep them safe? And there is a very large set of protocols and pieces of information, a lot of it legalese, about what do we do in these types of situations? So again, it's just in the board packet today to re-familiarize board members with this very long policy and accompanying guidelines along with the model policy. And so people will have the time to review as we look to revise or make any updates in the coming meetings.
All right. Thank you. I'll offer those in the boardroom an opportunity for comments or anything they found upon first read of policy 581?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Baraki, do you have questions or comments?
A very high level question, which is probably to just check my assumption more than anything else, which is what is the extent to which we have any agency to adjust things in this policy? This to me feels like it is very legally prescribed, that there is pretty clear legal guidelines in place around this. So I guess my question is how much of this is even really allowed to be district-specific?
Most is legal and most is legally recommended. It looks like Mr. Holgy has a small tidbit to share with us. So I'm going to pause and mute myself in human form and let him talk.
So the one piece that, well, as Steve said, much of it is legally governed by Minnesota government data practices. One of the items within this that the board has some discretion is identifying what directory information is for the district. So what is included in that category or what is not included in that category? So that is one item specifically that the board may want to take a look at. That different policies will show differently. For the next meeting, I'll take a deeper look at if there are other categories, but you'll see much of it follows Minnesota School Board of Association policy, pretty much verbatim. And that also I see both guide some places where there is some discretion on the part of the board and where it is strictly following statute.
Thank you. That was perfectly helpful, especially in terms of really honing in on that directory piece as being something that we should all take a good look at.
Ms. Cole, do you have questions or comments?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Tensing, I skipped over you. Apologies for that.
It's okay. I don't have anything substantive to say. Just, you know, to point out that the level of detail here, there's sections of the policy that reference disclosures before November 19th, 1974 and after. As if, I mean, it's hard to believe that that would still be relevant. We still do have files and are required to maintain files for a really extremely long time. And so there are files that are older than anyone in this room that we still maintain in Ritchill Public Schools.
Wow. Yeah, that's.
Just an example of the depth.
It really, yeah, it gets to the depth and the point that Crystal had made about. This one is one where there is not, you know, it is good to have the guidance where there is an opportunity for local control. But like many of our policies I've seen before that we've read, like we changed some of them at our own peril, right? We'd just be, and fortunately, we have good legal representation who would tell us, who would come back to us and say, do not do that, is my suspicion. So that's a good first read and I appreciate Mr. Holgy's direction on where we should spend our, our time and energy in terms of reading. I do want to note though, within the guidelines, which aren't necessarily what we approve, but there's an element within there where volunteers are listed and their responsibility to maintain private student data. And so I guess I would ask, we don't need an answer tonight, today, but the, you know, what do we tell volunteers? And how much do we impress upon them the need of what is private student data? And what should they be very careful not to say to the wrong person?
So it is outlined in here, volunteers would rarely get access to private data and they only have access to things that are, I just lost where the language was, specifically required for them or needed for them to be able to do their work in a legitimate educational interest way. So if a volunteer was serving in a way where they needed some form of that information, they may have access to it if it was needed to do the service, but generally they would not have access to almost any private data at all.
Okay. That's good. I just.
Mr. Holgy?
Thank you. Just to jump on two things. So one, in response to that, it is very position-specific. The one thing to think about with volunteers is we have volunteer coaches who may have access to certain information about players or students. And so their coaches, the athletic department should be making sure that individuals are following the protocols and information that way. Most part, they, volunteers have access to information. But if we have volunteers doing testing with students or reading with students or in feeding groups of kids, that might be considered educational data if it's leveled in any way or if they're creating tests or things like that. So those are things that are good to, something to be enforcing at the building level. They have volunteers coming into those situations. If I may jump in just back on the directory information, just so everybody knows what that means. But when you read directory information, think about your, think about school newspapers, think about newsletters, think about, I think about, you know, a lot of those things where it talks about photos and names and grades. You'll see athletic programs at the varsity level, you'll see it's yearbook. So if it's not the directory information, those things theoretically have a photo and every yearbook have to have a sign waiver. This is complex for anything that the district may be publishing. And so just be aware of that as you're looking through what is included in the information. If it does have the opportunity out of directory information, it has to, we have the ability to track that. So just certifications on that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holgy. I found the audio was breaking up some, but I will say, I guess it's a cautionary tale. If we felt we wanted to be more restrictive of student information in the directory, we could paint ourselves into a very bad corner in terms of pretty standard publications that are common within not just our community, but others when it comes to yearbooks or programs for athletics or newspaper articles about our students, you know. And so would.
Right. As Mr. Holgy was.
It's a reasonable caution.
Yes. And he was identifying, even though he was in and out or cut in through technology, there are things that we wouldn't think are necessarily private data that are shared. Like as you, as you point out in a yearbook, for example. And so there are things that, that may not be shared in the same way. And so we don't always think of that data as private data that can be.
All right. Okay. Last call for comments on this one before we move forward with the next item of new business. All right. Item B, the 2021 representative school assignment.
All right. So we did hear back and have made some adjustments. And so you see with input from our board members, proposed appointments of Paulette Cole Centennial, Crystal Baraki Sheridan Hills, Tim Palas RSTEM, Paulette Cole and Peter Tensing RDLS, Allegra Smiechek Middle School, Christine Malik High School and Peter Tensing Central and RSE.
All right. This should be non-controversial. I think we all gave input to it. And is it true that the only change is that Allegra and I traded?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Well, I will just open this one up to broad comment if anyone has any here in the boardroom. No. Excellent. Ms. Baraki, any comments or questions?
Questions? No. Thank you.
Ms. Cole, comments or questions?
I do not have any. Thank you.
All right. I also have none. With that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the assignments.
I will move the adoptable assignments as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion for Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Malick. Any final discussion before we head to a vote?
I will poll the board. Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Mechech?
Aye.
Ms. Baraki?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
The clerk votes aye and Chair Paulus.
Chair votes aye and the representative school assignment is approved. Thank you. The next item, very similar, but with lots more things on the list, is the board liaison assignments for 2021.
And that is correct. And similarly, we did work with board input to review and to update dates to the best of our ability. Board liaison assignments. And so we have that before you today, again, reviewed with board input.
All right. Thank you. I'm only aware of one, one where I was, you know, pretty much had requested to be removed from, and Ms. Malick stepped forward and took it, which is great because I know the Friends of Woodlake are a good partner. I just wasn't probably there as present as they would have wanted. Are there any other questions or comments on this? And I thank you for taking it, by the way. Ms. Baraki, questions or comments on the liaison assignments?
I do want to make just one, one comment with the AMSD assignment is even though, you know, that's, that's the assignment that I'm keeping. I just want to make sure that all members recognize that they are invited and welcome to attend. So don't have to feel excluded.
Thank you, Peter.
Can't wait to have a free Friday morning.
Right.
Ms. Baraki?
No questions.
All right. Ms. Cole?
No questions.
All right. I've already made my comments on it. Thank you again, Ms. Malick, for stepping forward for the Friends of Woodlake. Any other questions or comments or we'll entertain a motion?
I move approval of the 2021 board liaison assignments.
Motion by Ms. Malick.
And I'll second.
We have a second from Mr. Tensing. Wonderful. Last call for discussion before we put the item to a vote?
I will poll the board. Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Mechech?
Aye.
Ms. Baraki?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
The clerk votes aye and Chair Paulus.
Aye. And the assignments are approved. Thank you, everyone. All right. The next item of new business is the amended, an amended resolution designating polling places for 2021.
Yes. And so we partnered with the city on creating this document. And so we did that together, then turned it into the city. And then they said, no, we have forgotten something. And so we had to bring it back with Fort Snelling. And so as a reminder, Fort Snelling is within our voting area. It is also within our city. And so you'll note that in precinct one, you'll also have Fort Snelling precinct one, and that needed to be officially added so it can go back to the city. And so we are required or requested to act upon this resolution.
All right. Well, I would guess that this is largely non-controversial, this correction, and it's necessary. Those in the boardroom have questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Baraki, do you have, do you have questions or comments?
I do not.
Ms. Cole?
I do not.
All right. Last chance for discussion of this, of the resolution, the amended resolution. resolution designating polling places for 2021.
I would move that we approve the amended resolution.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Malick.
I'll second.
And a second by Ms. Smesek. All right, last chance on discussion before we move to a vote.
And since this is a resolution, I'll poll the board.
Sounds great.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Mechek?
Aye.
Ms. Baraki?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
The clerk votes aye and Chair Paulus.
Chair votes aye, and the amended resolution is approved. Excellent. The last item of new business is donations.
All right, so recommending that we accept with gratitude a donation from the Ellen Carlson Memorial Scholarship Fund, receiving a donation in an amount of $150 from E.V. Carlson and the Birthday Club. So thank you for that donation to the scholarship fund.
All right, thank you. As a routine matter, I will pause for any board member to offer comments, otherwise we will open it to a motion to accept the donation with gratitude.
I move that we accept the donation with gratitude.
I will second.
We have a motion by Ms. Smesek and a second from Mr. Tensing. Any final discussion?
I'll poll the board. Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Mechek?
Aye.
Ms. Baraki?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
The clerk votes aye and Chair Paulus.
Chair votes aye, and the donations are approved with gratitude. All right, we are now into the Advanced Planning Section, and the first item, as always in the Advanced Planning Section, is our Legislative Update.
Right, so since our last meeting, we had the Legislative Preview with the AMSD. It was a little different, given the virtual format, that I think required a little bit less of an interactive session and a little bit more of just kind of one-way communication. I think the other piece that was different is that the executive branch did have a larger presence at this particular Legislative Preview. We heard directly from the governor, the lieutenant governor, and the commissioner of education. Preceding those presentations, of course, came the presentations from superintendents who were presenting the AMSD legislative platform. The feedback, well, not really the feedback, but I think what's important for me to report on really is what the legislative delegation had to say. To me, the summary was that we are, Minnesota is relatively unique in the country in terms of having divided government, in terms of, you know, we have Republicans in control in the Senate and Democrats controlling the executive branch and the House. So that doesn't mean that we are in a situation where the two parties have to work together, which I'm hoping and optimistic can be a point of strength for us in this state rather than a roadblock or a barrier. What we did here was that, at least the way I would summarize it, is that the initial negotiating positions that were laid out by the leaders of each party in each body were, I think, some relatively familiar lines relative to having openness to see raising revenue as, basically having openness to raising revenue as a mechanism for balancing the budget as opposed to raising revenue as being off the table with balancing the budget. And in terms of budgeting priorities, it was pretty clear, I think, from the Republican side that raising revenue was seen as really not an option when it came to dealing with might be some budgetary constraints. So that particular, there was give and take between the two sides relative to sort of that philosophical position, and I think we're just going to have to see how that plays. But I think these are opening negotiating positions, and so it's really hard to know what that will mean in terms of how the legislature is going to tackle what could be some substantial budgetary challenges, given the effects of the pandemic on the economy and knowing that we do have some holes in the state budget to patch. We were able to, I think, you know, have a sympathetic audience from legislators in terms of the priorities that exist around some of our COVID-related budgeting needs. And then the question is, is it really going to boil down to priorities? And, you know, with all of the competing priorities at the Capitol, sort of how does that play? One piece that I think remains as far as work that we, you know, have talked about locally, and I think that this is also something that AMSD is interested in, and that has to do with MCA testing. So that particular policy item was not something that we really had time to touch on. And so I think that if we continue to feel that that's an important thing for us to advocate for, those opportunities are going to continue to be present as we move forward. So advocating with our federal legislators, Congress people, relative to waivers on sort of accountability testing, I think is going to be an important step. And I think the second piece is going to probably be finding those partners that we can be working with at a state level, you know, as we start, you know, looking at putting things together if we really want to advocate for that meaningfully. So that's kind of how I would sum things up. The battle lines are familiar. There isn't necessarily, you know, because this is an opening negotiating stance, it's really in nobody's interest to sort of tip your hand or show much in the way of willingness to pacify. So I guess I wouldn't feel discouraged, the fact that there wasn't a whole lot of middle ground that was displayed. I don't know that that's a reason for being discouraged right now. I think that this is just sort of establishing the opening positions. I don't know, Steve or others who were able to attend, further comments?
I think you did a great job of describing the things that happened in the legislative session and gave a thorough response. The only thing I would add on a different note is we continue to get clarity around ESSR funds, which are the new coronavirus funds allocated by the federal government. Estimates have continued to be rolling out, and we could be looking at money that is significantly more than we got in the first round. And so things to help support our long-term budget, but also really to look at funds that we could use to support the needs of our kids as we identify if there have been holes and what holes that have occurred during this time, and how do we spend the summer and next year doing our best using these funds to fill whatever gaps may exist.
All right. Do any other board members have updates that would fit the category of Legislative Update? Hearing none. We'll move on to the next item, which is Information and Questions from the Board. We'll open the floor. Does anyone have information to share or questions? I see head shaking. Keith has shared everything already. Ms. Baraki, anything?
I do have something to share, which is an update from our partners at 287, where I am on the board as Richfield's representative. Wanted to let people know that Superintendent Sandy Lewandowski has submitted her resignation as the leader of the district. She is a longtime 287 staff member. She has filled just about every instructional role I think you could fill before spending the last many years as superintendent. We accepted her resignation at our board meeting last Thursday, effective June 30th, 2022. So there is going to be a long runway and an ability to really develop a thoughtful search process in terms of making sure that we have a clear profile, are really engaging member districts in the process, our staff and community in the process. And so I just wanted people to know that that transition will be happening down the road in the future, and I will certainly share updates as we hit key milestones along the way.
Thank you. Ms. Cole, any questions or other things, information or questions to share?
I have nothing.
All right. The chair has nothing as well. And so that brings us up to future meeting dates. Our next meetings are February 1st, 7:00 p.m., regular board meeting, which will take place here or virtually for those who choose to participate virtually. And then the second meeting is February 16th, which is a Tuesday owing to the President's Day holiday, also 7:00 p.m. That is a regular board meeting here with public comment available. I should also note that the February 1st meeting has a 6:00 p.m. study session where we will meet with our peers at the city government, city council, mayor, city manager, and perhaps other members of the city administration who will join us for spirited, free-flowing conversation and catching up on common goals and areas of interest. And that will be 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. I believe it will also be live streamed, is that correct?
Yes, we anticipate being back on the live streaming channel.
Great, great, provided there's not a game. ITs.
There actually was some confusion between there's a live stream channel at the high school and a live stream channel for the board, and so for the district. And the district is the board one, but right now, the boys' basketball game, the basketball game is so exciting, it's on the district channel.
If we had to count the eyeballs interested in each, I'm pretty sure we would lose that vote. So this dispute was handled properly in my eyes. Do any board members have suggested future agenda items at either of the next meetings or any comments on the next meetings? Ms. Smesek, are you joining us remotely for that, for the February 1st? Is that correct?
I will not be able to join.
Not joining, okay. I know you had made mention of it previously, so I just wanted to remind myself. Thank you. So that gives me thinner margin to sweat out the quorum. All right. Well, with that, I did not hear anyone offer suggested future agenda items. And with that, we will move to the final item on our amended agenda, which is adjournment. As this item does not require a full board vote, I will officially adjourn the meeting as chair at 8:26 p.m. I hope everyone has a good evening and stays safe. And until the next time, we will see you then.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Great job, Tim.
Good job.
Good night.
Christine, too.